...the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Okay, when we get started, I'm gonna ask you to stand. You're standing, you're obviously standing. Say your name and address, and speak loud so everybody can hear you. So first thing on the agenda is I need approval of our minutes from our previous meeting, please.
So move, John.
Moved by Mr. Martin, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kopp. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Harry. Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing for the PDD and Mr. Katzstein. Mr. Langy, would you like to give us a synopsis on that?
Good evening, everyone. As many of you here are for this matter, this is a request by Ken, and he's gonna address the board, to rezone his property from what it currently is zoned for to what's called a planned development district. And there's copies of the local law are available at the town hall. Ken's gonna discuss the whole thing. So everybody knows the process. The town has a law on the books, it's zoning law, and it allows a person to request a zone change to a PDD if it meets certain requirements. It is a legislative act of the town board, but it also requires a recommendation from the planning board. Our planning board has this on their agenda, has had it on their agenda in terms of conformally to see what Ken's asking for, and then at some point we'll make a formal recommendation. There's also an environmental review process that's begun a few months back by the planning board. That has not been completed yet either. So there's the PDD recommendation from the planning board, there's the PDD environmental review process that has to be completed. Tonight, we're here for a public hearing on the actual legislative request by Ken to modify the zoning of that property.
And subject to the supervisor, I'd probably be smart to let Ken describe what he's asking for. Is that all right?
Yep.
So right now, we'll turn it over to Ken to discuss what he wants.
I gotta get a motion to open the public hearing first.
Oh, thank you.
So I'll need a motion to open a public hearing.
I'd like to move that, Ken.
Motion by Mr. Martin, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bruskevich. All in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Harry. Okay, Mr. Katzstein, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, it's gonna be a little more difficult tonight for me to explain what we're doing and what we're trying to do, because I have a big screen on the inside and I can show you what people are looking to be able to see. For those of you who know me, I have thirty-five, it was kinda funny because I thought about it yesterday, about thirty-five years ago today, I was in front of the town board at the planning board to develop Whitebridge Crossing. I was the original developer of Whitebridge Crossing, the ancient well, the ancient road, and, you know, a bit of our, kind of our basement, because a lot of the houses there. And I've kind of made it kind of my try. It's kind of a point right now where I never thought I'd be leaving. I thought I'd have control of all of the property from day one until maybe the property was gone and I'm back here in Florida. I'm gonna go visit my grandson and try to become a different life or leave the area. And, uh, what happened?
Always one.
That first comment in the public?
Yeah.
Development out of the badwood, and my property has always had a belt on it, with a D E C permit and draft prep, and originally designed to try to stay along railroad tracks where it is now, but look up the field behind my house, there's some like a nine holes that go the distance from the railroad to the place of my home. We went through the process of, uh, grandfathering that mine, and that included all of parcel thirty-two dash two fifty. Now thirty-two dash two fifty is on the east side of Bolivar Road, and it's also on behind my house, everything behind my house, all the way up to the old Third Route, is included in fifty-two dash two fifty. Now, in the process of grandfathering that, it's made it possible for mining to be done. Basically, the zone right now with the stand is a free, you know, before the zoning laws, it was, uh, you know, established as mining, it's been backed, and we have leases that were, that were, uh, signed in eighteen eighty-seven, I think, well, a lot of that mine was used for development of the railroads. Once the railroad was developed, it went into many of the town roads around here, uh, all of the roads on the lock lane, Hard Drew Drive, the school next door, the parking lot was done out of that mine, the great steel wall, the fire moved on with that mine. So it's an established mine. But what happened is, well, it is, any parcel, any part of that fifty, I'm just gonna designate it as fifty, this map here, anybody wants to see a map, I walked around some, but would have liked that. Any part, part of that fifty, parcel can be mined. It's not under an existing D E C permit, but it's, but it's available under zoning right now to go right up to the, the old Third Route. And that would be right behind the back row of houses. So between John and myself, then wouldn't it be nice if we could put a buffer in between those houses and where the mines would be done? This is what we're proposing, to have a buffer approximately four hundred feet wide, which would be, if you're in the back row on the north side of Hard Drew Drive, it would be the distance from there to the Whitebridge Crossing, that didn't get any more than four hundred feet wide. So that would be the width of the buffer that we proposed. And, um, like I'm the nicest guy in the world, and we're training it for, uh, number two parcel on the map, I don't know if somebody has a map, it's real hard for me to, which is the, the north side of the stand, probably, and on the north side here, I don't know if that would be right. No, heck, it's really good. And there's kind of, an agreement that maybe is what we're proposing, but that's possible to be, to be actual parcel, but we haven't seen it. In fact, it's not the last. Anyway, that aside, uh, what we're proposing, and it's a table of, I mean, what a buffer, approximately four hundred feet wide, we have a back row of houses, and the, uh, it's hard for me to explain each parcel. Parcel number one is the parcel on the north side of railroad track. Parcel number two would be the parcel right directly behind the mine area that exists now. And then parcel number, oh, I forgot, parcel number four is where the mining is right now. Parcel number three, parcel number five, directly behind my house. The parcel number three is behind the stand where he developed property, the house that I've been asked for, Hard Drew Drive off the end, but there'd be a buffer, a water outlet. Uh, this is our proposal. There would be no mining on the east side of our road. We were relinquishing all those, like, a vintage trade for that one parcel, and, you know, other, uh, like, uh, one of those. That's this board and another board member, uh, said maybe it'd be a good idea for me to have, like, anybody to kind of relax the property, or look at the property, come close to the earth, and all, kind of lock on Saturday morning, especially if anybody wants to change. But what we're trying to provide, this is, I'm moving, this is the last, uh, we started the brush on the painting, when we, we developed, we're trying to develop them, and this is my last chance to another, kind of, of paintbrush to the, to the painting. This would be the, this, uh, buffer between the house, I think it would be, now, the porch and everything there. That had time selling, or that person else, I talked to them, I can't control it, they wanted to buy something else, or other travel, or anything, that house, which was, were kind of, like, it's like a thief, that thief that provided all of that.
Law. I guess I'll let somebody else.
That's, that's fine.
Do you want to love the law, or do you want to leave the question?
I, I would just say, tonight, the idea tonight, there's nobody voting on anything tonight. We've already decided no votes are gonna happen. Tonight's the night, we have, the town board has to listen to your comments on this request. And, you know, there's a limited extent of whether Ken, we would ask if you have questions and you ask it to the board, and then Ken can answer out loud versus having, Ken having a conversation with fifty-seven people at the same time, we do it one at a time. And then there's a question, certainly comments will be recorded, but if there's a question, to the best of his ability, Ken will try to answer that for you tonight. And then they'll listen to what you have to say, and nothing will happen until some future meeting. And every option's on, on the table, which is to approve it, or disapprove it, or whatever it might be. Planning board still has not offered its opinion and recommendation on this request. So that still has to happen as well.
I think a lot of the questions, oh, excuse me, a lot of the questions too, John, is gonna be answered, not that it's likely.
John, would it be possible for me to have the same ten minutes or so to head up a response before we go into questions and answers and, you know, a lot of general comments and things?
Well, Jim, I think the way these usually work is you can, anybody can make a statement.
Right.
So one of your things is you can have, we're not, you don't have to ask any questions. You can say, here's my opinion on this, here's my statement.
Great, I'd like to make a statement.
Right. I don't wanna have fifty-seven of the same statements.
That's awesome. I don't think nine, I doubt.
You're unique, Jim, we know yours is gonna be.
Thank you, John.
Hi, everybody. Not back here.
Okay.
Camera's right here, you gotta hear it. Turn it down, camera.
So we've been asked to meet outside tonight because of the great number of residents of the Whitebridge community who gathered here to be seen and to be heard in opposition to this proposal. I would offer, though, that if we, uh, we would have to meet inside the Carrier Dome if all fifteen thousand members of our town were aware of the precedent that the creation of this PDD could have upon every single member of our town. What do I mean by that? As you may all be aware, in two thousand thirteen, our town adopted a very comprehensive, uh, six-page chapter to our land use code, chapter two seventy-five, entitled Mining of Sand, Gravel, Topsoil, and Hard Rock. One of the stated goals of the law was, quote, "Establish predictability in the siting and regulation of mining activities." And why is this so important? Well, just ask any one of the homeowners who together here tonight, by a conservative estimate, have well over five million dollars of property value on the line tonight. Whether they would have bought their homes if they thought there was any chance that a full-scale gravel mine could be opened literally a stone's throw away from many of those homes. How did the town give us all the assurance that this could never happen to Whitebridge? Let me read from the governing law of our town, section two seventy-five dash thirty, subdivision B, in condensed form. Mining that is subject to the issuance of a permit by New York State D E C shall be allowed only in districts zoned industrial, but not in any other district. Let me repeat that. And please know how the town took great pains to reemphasize this critical language of limitation by actually saying it twice. Only in districts zoned industrial, not in any other district. I've been a practicing lawyer for nearly thirty-six years now, rarely, if ever, have I seen language of limitation clearer than this. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the proposed location for this gravel mine is right in the middle of an agricultural zone, not industrial, and if it's allowed, this mine will require a D E C operating permit. So if we've been told by our town that we can rely upon the predictability of laws, and if we've been assured that we can safely set down roots and make truly substantial investments in our homes, how is it that we are here tonight fighting to preserve the neighborhood that we have all created? A neighborhood that I submit, second perhaps only to the Deep Springs subdivision on Jackson Hill, contains the nicest lots and some of the most affluent homes that you'll find in our entire town. This is the heart of what I meant when I said that if all the residents of our town understood the importance of why we are here tonight, we would need to gather in the Carrier Dome, not this parking lot. Now, before I discuss what did get us all here tonight, please let me address the words that I spoke when I said "the neighborhood that we have created." It would be wrong not to stress, as Ken's already pointed out, that Ken and Sherry Katzstein created our neighborhood. I met them nearly thirty-four years ago when I bought the very first house they built in Whitebridge Crossing. You will never meet two harder working people than Ken and Sherry. They're a self-made success story. They had a vision for Whitebridge that no one else saw, and they transformed that vision into a reality through years of hard work building homes while they also ran their farming operation. And they gave back to our community in many ways. Very few of you probably know the hours of labor and the money and the equipment that Ken and Sherry devoted to the high school to rebuild the football field that had become a swampy mess. And how many of us in Whitebridge remember Ken after any major snowstorm, traveling around with his payload or clearing out everyone's driveways? My wife, Laura and I have enjoyed a friendship with Ken and Sherry throughout these past thirty-four years, never had a cross word that I can recall that seemingly has been destroyed by this proposed project. And I want to know why and how it ever had to get to this point. What do I mean by that? And how does it relate to the bigger picture, which uncomfortable as it may be, has to be addressed tonight? As you've already seen, our town's mining ordinance is crystal clear. If the proposed mine isn't zoned industrial, it can't be created. But there is usually a potential exception to every rule, even one as ironclad as that one. And we find that potential exception, at least as it relates to mining operations that require a D E C permit, like this one will, in section two seventy-five dash thirty, subdivision A of the mining ordinance, which reads as follows. "A proposed mining operation not designated as a specially permitted use herein is not permitted and shall require the granting of a use variance by the Town of Sullivan's Zoning Board of Appeals." So when Ken and Sherry first approached the town with this plan, why weren't they just told, "It's not gonna work. Your property's not in an industrial zone. Your only option under the law is to apply for a use variance from the town's Z B A." Or were they told this? I don't know the answer to that question, not tonight at least, but the point remains that the ordinance clearly lays out the only avenue for relief that exists in this law: apply for a use variance. And to the best of my knowledge, that never occurred. Why? I submit that the answer is that both the town and the Katzensteins knew that they could never legally get a use variance. Use variances, as opposed to area variances, are almost impossible to get under the law. Essentially, the applicant has to prove that the property they own has no other economic value unless the use variance is granted. Not a chance with that argument, insofar as this proposed property is concerned. It's some of the finest farmland I've ever seen, and I grew up on a farm. Bumper crops of corn and soybeans have been grown by Ken and Sherry year after year on that land, as all of us have seen. Good tillable farmland today sells conservatively for five thousand dollars an acre. So the primary field alone has great economic value, just the way it stands. No, the use variance option wasn't viable, and it should have been the end of the story insofar as this proposed project is concerned. But someone, whoever it was, and for whatever reason, came up with a plan to try and get around these obstacles. It came up with the idea of creating what's called a Planned Development District, which, whether anyone likes it or not, is a fancy way of saying spot zoning. Or at a very minimum, a way of saying, take this comprehensive, six-page law on mining that's been adopted by our town and throw it out the window. Let's find a way somehow to make this work. We'll play the PDD trump card and get this through. Who came up with this plan and why? I don't know. Does the town board not care about the residents for some reason? No, I don't believe that. Our board is made up of good and honorable people. Very few people other than me know the personal toll that John Becker paid, as he tried to stand up to our former, now disgraced governor Andrew Cuomo and Ray Helbrider, fighting against the Indian land claim settlement that was forced down our throats. He did the right thing at great personal cost. Tom Kopp is one of the finest gentlemen you'll ever meet, and a steady, reasoned voice of leadership in our town and in my church for forty years. Jeff Martin brings a blue collar work ethic to the board and never stops trying to learn the things that we need to know to keep our school system in accordance with laws. John Bruskevich and Kerry Ranger, particularly John, have worked tirelessly for our town. They're responsive to anyone who reaches out to them. No, the town board does not have it out for us, far from it. I'm quite confident, as I stand here tonight, that ultimately, they will each do the right thing and protect our community from a transformational change that none of us want, as evidenced by the crowd here tonight and by a petition that we have with forty-nine signatures from owners registering opposition to the plan. So I can't say for sure who gave our town board the guidance to come up with the plan to bypass our laws through a so-called PDD, or why they did it. But I'll say this much: It's human nature to try and help a friend and a neighbor when they come to you asking for something, especially something that could make them a good deal of money. And let's face it, the town and the schools have benefited from acquiring fill from the Katzenstein's small gravel bed over the years. It's been close by, convenient, and probably a real fair price to boot. So maybe it was seen as payback time, that for all that Ken and Sherry have done for the community, let's try this. If the people of Whitebridge don't show up and squawk about it, we'll let it go through. And I spoke to four out of five of our board members in the past two days, and uniformly, that's what I've been told. This is why we hold public hearings. If the opposition is really there, we'll vote the project down. And I take each man at his word for that. But members of the board, and with all due respect to you and to each of you, I don't care who's advising you and what the motives might have been, it's just not that simple, not even close. Are we a town that's gonna be governed by laws, predictable, and uniformly enforced, no matter if the applicant is the least or the greatest amongst us? Or will we become a town run by a small handful of people who can be allowed to pick and choose who gets to advance and who has to pay the price for that? God help us all if you pick the wrong answer to that question. Read the law, apply the law, don't ever ask the residents of the town to fight for themselves again. Fight for them instead. Please do the right thing, the only thing. And when the time comes for your vote, enforce our mining law and vote this proposed project down. Thank you.
All right, we'll take other comments, if anybody has any.
I'll cut my comments down, because I think Jim did a, a good job, although, as an attorney. I'm gonna run through some numbers, I think, uh, his numbers may be a little bit off, but my name is Scott Millmamell. Live at fourteen eighty-seven Whitebridge Road, been there for sixteen years now. Um, and this PDD zone that I've started reading up on, I'm in real estate, and I've never seen something that's more like the Wild West in a town that allows a developer to come in and buy some land and put mine under contract and just change the zone. I'm sure anybody in the board here, if they have a house and someone buys some piece of property next to them, and someone comes in with a PDD to that, to, to change it to a landfill or a chemical plant, I'm sure you're gonna oppose it. This is a quarry that is within a thousand feet of my house. How does the town not notify, have the applicant notify us in writing, but I have to find out from a neighbor driving around my neighborhood of this meeting? It's just, it's ridiculous. There's fifty houses in our, in this half a mile neighborhood in Whitebridge, in our development, and on Bolivar. The, uh, sorry. Better than my glasses, though, thanks.
Well, isn't everybody is a great orator as Mr. Roman?
What economic benefit does a hundred-acre mining operation bring to the town? Let me quantify it. The Sella Quarry owns an eighty-two acre site off of Orange Dalphi Road in Fabius. The market value of that property is two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, uh, three thousand five hundred dollars an acre. If you take that three thousand five hundred dollars an acre as an increase in land assessment for this mining district, the town, school, and county will receive an additional thirteen thousand dollars, of which the Town of Sullivan only gets three thousand five hundred dollars. There's fifty houses in this half a mile neighborhood that actually have an assessed value of almost ten million dollars, paying three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of property taxes annually. You know how much our property taxes, our property values will decrease if you approve this mining operation? There's study after study, go on the internet, you can read this. Property values decrease within a one mile after a quarry opens by twenty to thirty percent, six percent in three miles. In our little neighborhood, there will, there will be a loss of property tax revenue of seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars, for what? Thirty-five hundred dollars. What are we doing? The leadership of this town is better than this. Let's attract quality businesses, quality jobs. Let's focus on companies that can provide meaningful jobs and ratables, not something that will destroy the value of fifty homes and the environment. On March thirty-first, Cassella Quarry on Route Five applied for a zone change, mind you not a PDD, for twen- two hundred and fifty acres next to their existing quarry. The next meeting, the town supervisor read into the record, the town has received several calls and correspondence regarding the zone change in reviewing. There's been no movement on that applicant since. But leaders of the town, a manliest, were, have tabled that, you have no obligation to vote for this district. There are over a hundred eligible voters in this half a mile district, most who are registered Republican vote no on this mining district, and let's find a better use for development in Town of Sullivan. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak? Anybody else? Yes, sir, sign up.
Uh, my name is Gordon Stansbury, I live at thirteen ninety-six Whitebridge Road. Uh, I'm one of the one or two people on the road, my brother included, that have been on the road longer than Whitebridge Crossing, uh, since we're the original homestead house on the road, and spending family for about seventy years now, so. Um, the first, uh, point I wanted to make is, um, the four hundred foot buffer, uh, I find that to be a little, uh, disingenuous, given that the, uh, the zoning code for mining prohibits any mining within five hundred feet of a house. So I believe that back row houses is roughly a hundred feet off of the, uh, gas line, which means that four hundred feet can't be mined anyway. So when we're being told that that's a gift to us, it's really not a gift because it can't be mined anyway. Uh, so just wanna make sure everyone's clear about that. Um, I just wanted to touch on the engineering side a little bit, uh, to say that I'm wholeheartedly against any kind of, uh, modification or expansion of a mining operation. I just wanted to touch on the engineering side a little bit, to say that I'm wholeheartedly against any kind of modification or expansion of a mining operation. I think the biggest concern that the neighborhood has and has expressed is water quality. We are all on wells through that whole neighborhood. We've tried to form a water district over the years, and we've not been able to get that done because of limitations with the canal and the railroad tracks. Quarries are well-known to disrupt both surface water and groundwater flow. They impact the recharge of the water system and the balance of the water in the area. They can harm the aquifer and potentially damage our wells. I'm also very concerned with the property across the railroad tracks, given that it butts up to the old dump. There is an old open dump that was there for years growing up, that we have a lot of question about water quality and how that could impact our neighborhood. Any kind of digging of the soil in the neighborhood of that dump has potential to negatively impact the neighborhood catastrophically if it's any kind of pollution. I also am concerned about potential impacts on natural waterways. The upper point of that property across the railroad tracks borders with Chitango Creek. So again, not only are you potentially changing water flow and groundwater patterns with the residents, but also a major river that goes through our area. On the environmental side or the wildlife, I'm concerned about wildlife and natural habitat. In my opinion, this is an environmentally sensitive area, given that you have Chitango Creek, you have the, what I call the swamp, which is a forty acre plus body of water to the west of here, which is a major migration route for fowl and all of that. So from a wildlife, I think it needs to be considered. From a traffic and transportation standpoint, I'm concerned with Bolivar Road's capacity to handle increased truck traffic. If you go down Whitebridge Road just past my house, anybody that walked down the road can see what the increased traffic from durfies has done to the road. It's crumbling. Bolivar Road is an oil and stone gravel roadway. I understand that, you know, it carries the town trucks in the wintertime with the plows and whatnot, but a consistent year-round trucking operation is a concern on how the road will handle that. And then, of course, the one thing that the entire neighborhood is clearly out here because of is quality of life. We're concerned with noise, we're concerned with the large loaded trucks on a narrow roadway without any kind of curb for pedestrians or bicyclists. You know, there's a safety issue because there's a lot of walkers and a lot of riders on Bolivar Road in this area, between the canal and adjoining roadways. And then, of course, we're concerned with dust. So those are the main points I wanted to put out there that I think most of the neighborhood is concerned about, and I hope you guys will vote no. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay, I'd just like to say, to one of Jim's points there, Roma's points there. The PDD, the town has used the PDD planned district developments and planned unit developments since the Boot development went in, uh, down in Lake. We wouldn't have a lot of the developments if it wasn't for PDD. And yes, Jim is correct, that is kind of a way to skirt spot zoning. If we did go by zoning and not have spot zoning, we'd never have any expansion of the town of business or housing developments as we've used down there with Boot's development, Mastiano's development, I think with Sebastian Cove, was that a PDD? That was a PDD, wasn't it? Blaze LaRaca's little unit there?
What year was that?
A couple, three years ago.
What PDD for him?
Yes. Yes. Anybody who knows Blaze LaRaca and the little Sebastian Cove, uh, development down along the lake? The place was a disaster from the previous owner. There was junk everywhere. He got in on some green energy grants, he went bankrupt, and the place was a disaster. I urge anybody to go down there now. It's a beautiful place. I was talking to him today. He's built six units along the lake, he's building four more and building another four. So the town issues the PDD in good ways to help the town. And we hear what you're saying, that, you know, it's something, this is something that you don't want. Ken did approach the town board, did talk to him about this, but Ken was told that, you know, if the neighbors come out, it's going to be a whole different story. So I just want you to know that, out of time, and I want the PDD to be out there. It is a tool that the town uses and works out well for us when we use it.
I think that everything that was said was important here, and I think a lot of times I feel the same way. Speak up a little bit. Okay, I'm sorry. I'll face this way, I'm back up there a little bit. The problem with the whole, whole idea of this document right here. It's a D E C permit that exists on that property. Oh, Jim was speaking, but there's no D E C, you have to have a industrial zone to have a mine. This is a D E C permit that has existed for thirty-five years, thirty-plus years, and its grant, it's made the place took place long before the law that Jim was thinking of existed. What this means and that whole property being existed, I'm not here for the wrong part of it. Because I'm going to start up a stair less than I'm going to. But what I'm trying to do is protect this neighborhood, anybody that has this permit, and with that property number fifty, being granted, that whole thing would be developed. The developer would not have to go in front of this board or the planning board to develop that whole section of property, but right at the back of those houses. The towns would be asked for some input from the D E C to say, you know, you'd like to move it back a hundred feet, or you'd like to not have you working night, all of those things. They can request from D E C, but D E C could just go, because the mine exists. I mean, let me, let me try to, you know, I might, you know, the big story of money has come up. Whether that place brings, or somebody else, will bring a hundred thousand or million, I don't know. But making a difference, money's not really close. This, given developer, you're right to develop that fifty, that property number fifty, which is now, now the band behind my house, back to what it eventually was.
I have a question.
Let him finish without.
Sorry.
Yeah, please, people, if you ask a question, you know, I could, like I say, on Saturday morning, I could walk me come through it, but this is a free system, D E C permit, so I'll go, the laws up until, you know, everything that, you know, it's, it's now, you know, the industrial zone. It's moved basically, it's something where you push it hard. The town has already been through with the mine on quarry road. That, and that was not even a permitted area, that was what was going to be a reserve for that current lineup there. They took it to core, they lost. But somebody wanted to push it, wanted to eat the gravel, the Sally's approached me. They wanted to put it along the bottom of the lake. I didn't like the way that they were going to mine it. I didn't approve, I didn't approve it. I said, you're not doing it. They would have run many trucks in and out of there. I'm not an evil person. I'm not looking for money. This is the kicker. This is what obsoles a lot of windows. I'm sorry, but this is the way it is, and my goal is to make it.
Jack, can you address the town's perspective? I got one lady before you, Jim, would like to ask a question.
Oh, I just had a question that that was placed prior to the whole neighborhood development track. Your house was first built first, and that was placed prior to all of our buildings, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, the mine was, was, was done when we put the roads in, in the fountain, maybe we trusted it to go without a thousand yards a year. In a private mine like that, they asked if you did it, if you got some money for that, that's why they got mine. So we established that in nineteen eighty-eight, I think that's initially established. And we put our roads into that mine, that's a part of the houses, I don't have that to worry about, it's not very much. I should give the roads now, eight, eight, seven, and most of the houses, they were a couple of them, nine, four.
Mr. Roman?
John, have you reviewed the permit that Ken holds, and does the town agree that this is, why are we here though? Why is there a PDD necessary if in fact it's already been done?
The answer to your question, Jim, is I've seen this permit a long time ago, and his attorney, who was a Williams attorney, made the determination to approach the town with Ken to request the option of a PDD, and she understands that. Maybe you'd have to ask her and Ken, but you were certain, as you said, Jim, you were a hundred percent right of what the way you experience it works. They're virtually impossible to get, and that's fine. Everybody in the town, if they have enough property, has the right to ask, ask for a PDD. Others have. Some of them granted, some haven't, depends on the circumstances. Everybody has the right to ask. So the important part about this tonight is nobody's made a decision whatsoever to approve or disapprove.
We're not addressing the issue that Ken's raised. He's saying he's got a permit that already gives him the legal right to do everything he's proposing to do. Do you?
That's an over, that's an overly broad statement. He has a, he has a D E C permit because he does, he does do mining, everybody agrees, he does mining out of, out of that pit, right? So that mining, the pit has a certain amount of material in it that he can get to, that the D E C would say he can get to. He may need to ask for an expanded mining permit in the future. And if that's the case, the D E C would send a notice that he's asked for that, and then anybody, your neighborhood, everybody can make a comment back to the D E C, and then they can make a decision on that as well. And then his attorney.
Does the town act as?
Only on the PDD. The D E C has primary jurisdiction on mining operation. What happens in the four corners of a mining operation is the primary jurisdiction of the D E C. The town only has jurisdiction over zone changes. A PDD is a zone change if you have enough acreage.
Again, just for all of our benefits, I can understand. Why, what's the motivation to ask for a PDD?
I can't respond to someone's motive. As you know, I can't, I can't tell you what any, any one person's motivation is, and that's a discussion that Ken's trying to have.
Why did the town agree to, because they asked?
Well, anybody, anybody here, any of you folks who come in and ask for a zone change, it may or may not be granted, but you can't rob a person of the right to simply ask. And they've been denied, and they've been approved all over somewhere. I represent over thirty municipalities, we get PDD requests all the time, and we thank each one on its own merits.
Yes, man.
That permit is issued directly to you, though?
Well, I got her there first.
If you deny the PDD, what could happen next?
Well, then the town won't change the zoning for it, and then Ken and his, his personal attorney would have to reevaluate what they can do.
Hey, who was, yes, sir.
So Ken, that permit is issued directly to you personally?
Yeah.
So you made a comment, you have enough money, you don't care. Why destroy the property values of the fifty houses next to you if you have such a love of the area? Why are you doing that? I mean, what's the motivation? It must be money.
No. The motivation is to provide buffer. You're going to, you know, you're going to, you're going to say this is, you know, but if, nothing gets done. I can, I thought, you know, basically if we, I don't even have to speak to my attorney, what's going to happen to that? I'm going to sell the parcel to permit with transfer, and whatever that person.
Give the permit back to the D E C. Give the permit back.
Yeah, okay, now you have a house. If somebody said.
Okay, it's about money, then. Don't, I mean, don't hold the wall over everybody's eyes. It's about money.
Let me finish, please. If somebody said, take your, if you have a two-story house, wall off the upper section of your house and don't use it. You could do that, but would you? I mean, in terms of the property, yes, it does have value. And it has value either by solid wood or without the PDD. It's just a matter of where that money will go.
There's another lady that had a question.
Lori, go ahead, Lori.
Does the D E C, D E C permit only allow you to quarry where you're currently quarrying? Or does it allow you to quarry on the hundred plus acres or whatever? I don't know, it's all of that way.
Can you direct me to that?
Yes.
The parcel number that has the thirty-two, that's pretty good, would be thirty-five acres behind my house. And a parcel on the east side, two hundred acres. So the whole hundred and some acres is there. The PDD would be the hundred and some acres, but I don't know where they were. I think that includes all the upper area and the waste area, I don't know about that. But if the upper area is going to be, the east side of Bolivar Road is approximately twenty-four acres. And I think my house, I think it worked out to another twenty acres. So that was off the top of the, that was the whole, my parents would, you know, hundred, hundred PDD would be mineable. Hundred and some of the fifty acres, thirty-five acres behind my house, fifty-nine.
State the situation.
My, my question is, if you're trying to find an offset buffer zone, why are we adding sixty-eight acres to mine it? Because clearly, it's, if the mining property is being expanded much larger, we're going to.
Like, 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 in the world? Like I say, you're going to only use half of your house. I mean, you're asking me to give up half of your house, you know? If you were given a buffer and you wanted just exactly, just to mine down that side of the railroad tracks, that might be a reasonable offset mine. But when you're expanding the mine to two times what it currently is, that, that, it's, it's not, it's not part of the second quarter house or end of quarter. Wait, town, I would have to make the town, I would make it, let's say, drop it. But I would like to have up to the twelve acres that behind the houses exists, and fifteen acres of those that would be included, up, I don't know. Maybe like twenty-five acres, twelve, twelve, fifteen, twelve.
Yes, sir.
So I, I just want to be clear.
Say your name, sir, please.
Todd, right, I live at thirteen thirty-one, I have a property board right up on the hill. I think I understand Ken's motivations, and I don't, I don't disagree with why he's doing anything he's doing. I think the only question I have, and a lot of people here have, is a question for the town. And I think I heard an answer, but I'd like a clear answer. If the town denies the PDD. PDD or PDD?
PDD.
Thank you. If it's denied and the zoning is not changed, can Mr. Katzenstein use that permit or any future owners of the property, use that permit to expand the mining, the mining that's already going on in that property?
He would have to go to the D E C and ask for additional areas to expand the mining.
That's not the question I'm asking.
And then, he would have to assert that he has legal rights to go beyond those areas.
That's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is if the zoning is not changed, if he or a future use, uh, owner, use that permit to mine or expand mining in that area?
Not that particular permit.
Thank you. You have to get. I think that's all I need to know. So what I'm, what I'm hearing is this is in the hands of the people I see in front of me.
The zone change.
No, no. What I'm hearing is that what happens to my neighborhood is not in Ken's hands, it's in your hands. You have the power. Right.
Only the PDD.
Of the, of the future expansion of the mine is totally being the D E C.
Yes, sir.
So my name's Carolyn Lewis. I live towards Dallas, and that is actually my property also backs up to the property that's questioned here. Going along with what Todd's saying is, and this is the issue. I think, I think there's been some unique language that's been used to try to make it sound like that permit would then just be handed off to the next owner, and oh geez, guys, here I am, I'm trying to create a safe zone for you, because the next owner can then come in and do whatever they want. And Todd's question hit the nail on the head. That's not the case. If, if the town hears our voices and sees what we're here for, then clearly we are concerned, we are not interested. And if I'm wrong, then I apologize for speaking through you. But we are not interested in losing property value. We are not interested in endangering our water supply for ourselves, for our kids. We love the wildlife. That's one of the beautiful features of our houses. We see the need of things walking through our yards. We go on a walk, we see beautiful things. The canal is unique. We do not want damage to expand beyond that. Who knows how far reaching it could be to the water? We do not want damage to expand beyond that, who knows how far reaching it could be, to the water that is below the ground. None of us have it mapped out, we don't know how it's gonna disturb it. So clearly, you can see, this is a concern. But the fact of the matter is, we're being sort of like, strong-armed in a very gentle way by Mr. Katzstein when he says, I can hand this permit off, and then the next owner can do what they want, that's not true, from what I'm hearing. And if I'm wrong, clarify it, please, because none of us really understand. But if he sells the property, that person's gonna have to come and ask for the same things, a P D D. And if that doesn't work, they're gonna have to go to the D E C and ask for a new permit. So it's not just a given, like, hey, I'm offering you a great deal, take it or you suffer later. Am I correct?
This is the purpose of what you're saying, when everybody says the purpose of this meeting is to hear your concerns, so they can make a reasonable decision on that.
But am I correct in saying that, yes, the next owner can't just take that permit and run with it and do whatever they want? They have to go through the same process, they have to ask-
They could try to ask for a P D D, yes, but, but they may have another way they'd like to try, they could ask for a use variance, which, which was mentioned by Jim.
Right.
Or they could ask for other types of relief if they want to try.
Right.
What we're saying is, everybody has the right to ask for the P D D. Doesn't mean it'll be granted or not granted, but we have to have this process to hear your comments, and we're hearing your comments.
But what I'm saying, when he held up the permit, that is not like a get out of jail free card in a sense, if we can relate it to the lovely game of Vapoury.
That's what Ken's position is, I'm not evaluating it.
No.
Of course, not evaluating those statements.
But we have to understand the weight of that, because that's a huge factor as we stand here. If someone holds something up and says, I can just hand this up, and it goes with them, we need to understand how valuable that is. Am I right?
That's right, that's a threat.
Yes, it is a threat, it's like saying, if you don't, you may not feel it, that's how it feels.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna get it to people.
But that, but that's how it feels to us. So you have to hear us as all.
And I think Ken's side, and I think Jim's side, we're here to listen to you, and we will listen to you. But if Ken is right, and I don't know if he's right or not, or another owner takes that to court, giving the craziness of what's going on at the federal, at state level, and the judges that we have, there's no telling what could happen. And I'm telling you, that that could go to court, and somebody could say, yeah, that whole area was meant to be mined, and you can go and mine. We can appeal it, the town taxpayer dollars, look what it got us on Cory Road, got us nowhere. Got a lot of trouble, so I take it on. But that's the crap shoot that you take. You know, I'm not sure if Ken's right, I don't know if he's right, he came and asked us, this is what we presented, that's why we're here. So you need to talk amongst yourselves, and see whether, you know, you think he can do that? Jim, you give good advice, you know, whether you think this could happen or not?
I think my chances are, John Cireo, or, or, I have to post all of them down, I really would, they're solid guys, and they'll pick up a bear hook at it. And if Ken has those rights, then Ken should be able to enjoy those rights. I'm not here to pillage Ken or take anything away from him, I don't know the extent of it, I have a real strong doubt that it's as sweeping as Ken says, because he wouldn't be here, he wouldn't have to be here. It doesn't make any sense to me, usually when it doesn't make any sense, it's because it's just not quite it.
Yes, ma'am.
Tanya Louts, uh, Marshu Drive, I just have a question on the permit, is there a limit on how much can be excavated in here? Like, is it after what they do now, you have limitations?
There's an acreage.
Acreage or like quantity?
Quantity, no, it's a design, it's a design, you put in a design, and they give you, uh, uh, kind of, and maybe I'm here because I'm just. Uh, the way I understand it, the town would not be notified if a future owner goes to D E C and wants to take whatever portion of that parcel, of his grandfather's parcel. So being the parcel of grandfather that will not come back and, where, my right?
I think we get a notice.
You get a notice.
There's any change, you have to give a notice.
There'd be a notice.
Well, I, I think it's before they change it, but.
There'd be a notice sent to the board, what they could write on.
But the, the public doesn't get a notice, it might come to the town.
It come to the town, but we, we'll go through the same, will it go through town board and planning board again, or will it go through?
Well, the, the town board has the opportunity to respond to that.
Okay, so this is the way I understand it, and I'm, and I'm pretty sure that this is right. If-
Yes, ma'am.
Two, two eighty-six, Marshu Drive, I have a question, why now?
Somebody get your name, do you say it again, please?
Two Moon?
Two Moon.
Well, see, if, if the, if I'm right, and it might be something Jim wants to look into, if I'm right, and that parcel as a whole is grandfathered, anybody that wants to expand that, it can expand it, it will go to D E C, it will not go to the town, it will not go through a P D D. And that'll be the original grandfather parcel.
But why did you not do this ten years ago, when you were going to live here and have this in your backyard? It's really my question. It will be in our backyard, and they're buying that.
It's always been in our backyard, and it's possible that somebody could buy. I, I mean, God forbid, you know, what, what I don't understand is why everybody's not, we're leaving, I don't really care.
There's the point, that's, bing, 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 that's the point.
We can, uh, you know, you're right, I'm, I'm, yeah, I mean, it, it may, it may sound stupid. I mean, it may sound stupid, we have, we would like to finish the eight rush, eight hundred parcel. People that know me know that I'm sincere, and we're here.
So we'd like to get the rest of your comments still, I, I know it's getting dusty, but other folks that wanna make your comments, because your comments are going into the record, and that's important, that we get all of your comments. Also, I should say this, I forgot, your written comments, your emails will also be included, because, as we said, no decisions are being made tonight at all. So any other comments, you can make them verbally tonight, you can email, any way you wanna provide those comments, they go into the files.
Yes, ma'am.
I feel, um, when are you gonna make a decision?
I don't know, I don't know when the board will make those decisions, it's unclear at this point.
Will there be, do we just have people looking at the agendas?
You can do that. We'll post it, and we're gonna bring it back up, put it on the agenda. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Turn in front of the post, something hit it for you.
Oh, okay, thanks. The land, seven three oh nine Bolivar, um, impact of all that, regardless of mining, development, whatever. I was wondering, first one, number one, is adjacent to what used to be the landfill on Bolivar Road. Does anyone know when that was closed, that land that, uh, pretty much unlimited, unrestricted dumping site?
None of you said anyone would know if he was here, but I have no idea, I don't know.
You don't wanna know what's in there?
No, well, the D E C is going around and checking those, and, and he probably knows a little bit about it.
Commander here's something I always wondered about, um, for the last couple of years, the D E C has stopped, they actually put in six wells and tested the water this last year, she got three quart back, I believe, the language that I can read is, is, is low hell. So, if I wanted to hit water fifteen feet, so if the water being was-
They built six wells in this, one.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all for coming, we appreciate it very much. I have one more question for all of you, it's very important before we leave, I love a cast of audience. Uh, we're gonna be talking about our great cannabis law that our state has presented. Now, we're talking about opting out as a town. If we opt in, you get a big portion of sales tax if there's a dispensary in your town. Uh, but we think that there will not be a dispensary in the town. What it's gonna be, is it's gonna be the nation that does that, so we're not gonna get a cut of the money anyways. And frankly, the way that we feel, we don't think it will be good. So I'd like to see a raise of hands of who would be for opting into the cannabis law, and then we'll do opting out. So who would be in favor of opting into the cannabis law?
Do I need to, should I explain what opting in means?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, quick explanation, just high-level explanation. Right now, in the state of New York, you may personally possess a certain amount of marijuana, that's not what this is about, we have no control over that. There are two things the town has control over, what's our dispensaries, where you can go get marijuana and purchase it legally, if the state allows that business to have a license for it. And the other thing, the other thing you can do is consume it on-site, which I, I look like as like a bar, to smoke marijuana at. But the, the wrinkle is, you can't have alcohol and marijuana in the same thing. And so the question here is, will the town say to, to, uh, to the state, we don't want dispensaries, this is all recreation. We don't want dispensaries, and we don't want the so-called hookah lounges, the bars, marijuana bars, in our town. That means we're opting out. If we do nothing, then they're allowed to be in here if they get state licensing. And nobody here knows who's gonna get a license, or when, or how hard it's gonna be, or what it's gonna cost, because the state hasn't really released that information. It's a big level question, and it's an important question, and the town wants to understand what, how you feel about it.
Okay, Mr. Thien.
Uh, just one question on the opting in, uh, you said that, uh, the town is pushing the sales taxes, is that only the sales taxes within the town?
Within the town, yes.
Okay, so if it ends up being the nation own?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we get nothing, or if it's in the city of Oneida, we get nothing, like, we share the sales tax revenue, we're off the county, none of that.
But if, but if the vill, if the village keeps it, the village says, yeah, we're okay with this, and the town's okay with it, the both are okay, there's a split that could occur between the village and the town, what comes out of the village, that's pretty more complicated than I wanna say. And nobody's shown me any statistics that accurately predicts what those amounts might be, so I don't, nobody here on this board can tell you how much money's at stake, we just don't know.
Yes, sir.
That, that was my first question, if you had any idea what that numbers might be. Question number two is, if the nation wants to do it, whether we opt in or not?
Right, they're gonna do it, yes.
Yeah, and that, that cuts everybody here out, you're, you don't get any of the benefits, right? But it is a big question, because it deals with where can they be located, and the, if they can be located in the town, and if you allow them, where would they be? That's a separate issue, if it ends up happening, then the town can use zoning to put it in different places.
Yes, sir.
The nation getting a dispensary doesn't prohibit for a, someone else to get a dispensary.
Correct, correct.
Generating sales tax revenue.
That's right.
Correct, but, because they've got two good venues, if they do something there, that's where it's gonna be.
And it's likely that the state, just like with the casinos, uh, there's not that many casinos that the state issued licenses to. It's, in my opinion, it's unlikely the state's gonna hand those things out like they're candy, those licenses for the, for the cannabis. But I also guess it'll be somewhat political how people get them, and we're not, we're not gonna know for probably a couple of years. So they, they really aren't up to speed on this, but it's an important question, because the town has to act before the first of the year. Because if the first of the year comes, and we didn't want it, it'll be too late, we have to, we have to vote and say we don't want it, or we have to be quiet and do nothing, in which case it'll come after the first of the year.
Yes, ma'am.
If you opt out now, what it is, a year?
That's a great question, that, this is a great question. So the answer to that is, you can always go back in, if you want to. If you opt out now, and two years from, from now, you take yourself to, well, we were done for not doing that, you can get back in. The state created the law that way, the law is designed to try to have this happen, and they provide, they put this little provision in there that says, if you opt out now, it doesn't prevent you from opting out later, or from, from opting in later.
Yeah, but we can't do that, no. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna say, I'm thinking on the opting in, and I'm not sure yet which way I go with it, but opting in seems like a good idea, because then maybe you do have the option of having a dispensary that does provide revenue. Whereas if you opt out completely, then it's just going to-
In the future, you could go bring it back in.
Right, I know, but I'm saying right now, if you were to opt in right now, at least there's an op, an option for the revenues to come in, where if we opt out, there's just no option at all.
For, for presently, but again, if, by the way, so just so you know, so if we do nothing, there's no way, if by the first of the year, we don't do anything, after that, you can never opt out, it's one-time only. And the other thing, somebody mentioned here, which is another important thing, is this type of a law by state law is, 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 would be adopted subject to a permissive referendum. That's a whole different panel, if a petition is submitted, you have to have a whole election, and do all that stuff, and that's only if the board opts out.
Okay, so, yes, ma'am.
So if you opt in, do you have to opt in for everything, or can you choose, can you just have the same?
You can choose, you can opt out of some things and not others, but again, it's only two things, dispensaries, uh, and on-site consumption. Those are the only two things that you're allowed to opt, opt out of, but that's another great question.
So you can, you can opt in for one and out together?
Yeah, and I, you know, we keep throwing the word opt in around, and that's fine, because everybody understands it. But essentially, you don't vote to opt in, you just, or don't say anything, and then it can come into the town. So we're, we're gonna decide for the town, if, if they want to opt out.
So we're gonna do a gauge, opt in.
And we're gonna have a public hearing on it too, so, there'll be a public hearing.
On the board, it's gonna be winner, opt out. All right, and one more thing, we're doing the budget, and it looks like we're gonna do another zero percent benefit now, again this year.
All right, all right.
Hey, thank you, everybody, for coming.
You wanna go inside?
Yeah, we're gonna go inside.